Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This virtual confirmation hearing is now called to order. Today's date is Thursday, February the 10th, 2022, and the time now is 4:00 P. M. The Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Response, Military and Veterans Affairs, Marriage Counselor Wong and Public Transit is conducting a virtual confirmation hearing today for the appointment of Mr. Julian C. Jensen, the sheriff's member of the Guam Regional Transit Authority Board of Directors. For the record, in performance with section eighty-one oh seven of chapter eight, title five G C A, the first confirmation hearing notice was sent out on Thursday, February the third, twenty twenty-two, to adhere to the five working days requirement. And the second confirmation hearing, adhering to the forty-eight hours notice was sent up on Tuesday, February, February eighth, twenty twenty-two, and in addition to these notices, were also sent out to the, to all media and posted on the Guam Legislature website. And I would like to thank all my colleagues for attending this hearing, and I would like to recognize my colleague Senator John Brown with us today, and also Senator Joanne in Teletype, Tactically, and also, I guess, the acting manager for the Guam Mass Transit, Mr. Richard Ivanis, and we're gonna go ahead and go with the with the presentation with some of the senators and Mr. Ivanis to share their thoughts on, on this confirmation hearing. So I'm gonna call on our good senator. Let me call on our good senator first. Senator John Brown, Senator, go ahead, you can start.
No problem, Mr. Chair, would you like to have as Acting Director of Mass Transit, gonna provide testimony on behalf of Mr. Jensen?
Yes, it's gonna be on, yeah, I'm gonna let the, my colleagues go first.
Oh, no problem, I, I think it'd be preferable if they provide their testimony and then that would be the opportunity. Yeah, I, I think it'd be preferable, perhaps, Mr. Chair, if they went first, and then we can certainly follow after.
Okay.
That way, if we have any questions, we can inquire as to the testimony they provide, if you don't mind.
Okay, Richard, go ahead.
Thank you, honorable senators, Mr. Chair. I've spoken with Mr. Jensen regarding his appointment to become a board of trustee for the Guam Regional Transit Authority. He did have questions, and, and I addressed them. He was already, he's very knowledgeable with the G R T A. Just from speaking with Mr. Jensen, I feel that he will fill a vital role as far as filling our last spot for the Board of Trustees. He's very knowledgeable with grants, and of course, we need G R T A being funded with a lot of grants from the F T A. Mr. Jensen will be a very valuable asset to the Guam Regional Transit Authority. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Richard, and let me call on our friend, Mr. Carla Branch, go ahead, sir. Mr. Branch, just provide your testimony, sir. Carlo, go ahead, sir. There we go.
Perhaps we can let him know, Mr. Chair, we can't hear him.
Yeah. Carla, can you hear me?
Yeah, you might wanna, Carla, you might wanna check out and then come back in because we can't.
Yeah, yeah, okay, let, let me, let me call on our good Senator Joanne, Senator Joanne Brown.
Have we heard from the, Mr.?
You know, call on Mr. Chair, I think we can have Mr. Jensen, and then maybe by then, if Mr. Branch is able to reconnect, then we can have him provide his comments. I, I don't, I'm not sure if he's aware, we're not able to hear him.
So you, you're recommending that we go to Julian to have him speak first?
Yeah, I think in the interim, unless we can get Mr. Branch on, just to make time, you know, productive, perhaps have Mr. Jensen provide his testimony, and if Mr. Branch can get back on, and we can hear him. And then we can proceed with any questions, that, that way we can inquire as to the testimony provided.
Okay, so we, we go to Julian, Julian, go ahead.
Hafare Zen, Buenas Tatas, Honorable Members of the Guam Legislature, Chairman and Senator Jose Terlali, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Telo Tai Tegui, Senator Joanne Brown, writers and supporters of public transit and members of our community. Before I begin my testimony, I want to make clear that my testimony is solely my own and does not represent the position or opinions of my employer or any other organization or per person with which or whom I may be associated. I'm greatly honored to be appointed under the administration of Governor Lourdes Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Joshua Tenorio to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Guam Regional Transit Authority. I humbly and respectfully ask for your favorable consideration in providing consent to my appointment under Guam law so that I may serve the people of Guam in this role with honesty and integrity until the prospective term would expire in twenty twenty-five. I would like to thank Mr. Richard Ivanis and Carla Branch, who's going to be testifying later, for testifying on, on my appointment. I understand that the committee is also in receipt of a number of testimonies with regard to my appointment, so I hope that due consideration will be given to those. While I believe the senators present know me, I would like to give a brief introduction and provide some background to anyone listening. I am Julian Jensen, and I was born in nineteen eighty-three, raised in Oregon until my parents, both teachers, moved to Guam in nineteen ninety. I spent almost all my time since then in Guam, living in PD and later to Mooning. I attended Agate Elementary, to Mooning Elementary, Saint John's Episcopal School, Saint Anthony Catholic School, Guam Adventist Academy, and I graduated from John F. Kennedy High School. I earned my Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from the University of Guam and completed all but my thesis in a Master of Public, or Ma- Master of Science in Applied Economics from the University of North Dakota. I had a summer internship for Senator Rory Rispicio and have worked for Senators Ray Tenorio, Adolfo Palacios Sr., and Michael Seniklis. I currently work as a Planner Three for the Guam Coastal Management Program in the Bureau of Statistics, Statistics and Plans under the Office of the Governor. In December two thousand and eight, the Department of Public Works adopted the twenty thirty Guam Transportation Plan. One of its key policy recommendations was the re-establishment of a public transit authority governed by an independent board. The next year, the Guam Regional Transit Authority was established as a public corporation under public law thirty-five, which was introduced by my former boss, Senator Palacios. I am proud of the work we did to improve accessible parking enforcement and provide additional resources to this. I believe that the admini- administration of the Guam Regional Transit Authority should be led with a triple bottom line approach to responsible and accountable management, which is about people, environment, and fiscal responsibility. For people, G R T A is fundamentally about providing accessible, safe, affordable, clean, friendly, and efficient public transportation to its ridership, many of whom have disabilities, are senior citizens, are people with low to moderate incomes, are students, or simply those who wish to reduce their carbon footprint. Whether riders use G R T A's paratransit, fixed route, or demand response service, they need to be accommodated appropriately and given good service. Public transportation is about more than mobility, it is also about dignity. The dignity of independent living for people with disabilities and senior citizens, the chance to live our lives and to work without being tied to the kindness of others. On environment, public transit is already an environmentally friendly way to travel, and G R T A will become even better as it grows to have higher utilization and as it adopts technology such as solar lighting at the bus stops and begins to replace its existing fleet with electric vehicles. On fiscal responsibility, the dollars that come into G R T A, whether they are from non-appropriated funds, local appropriations, or federal grants, have to be carefully accounted for and invested in improvements to the services provided to transit riders. I believe we are seeing meaningful progress toward building a transit system that can adequately meet the various needs of the people of Guam, and particularly the core ridership of G R T A. I consider capacity building a central issue within the context of moving the transit system to where it needs to be. There are significant investments in building capacity in the works, including a substantial increase in the fleet of transit vehicles, the establishment of facilities to serve G R T A and its ridership, and plans to establish charging stations using federal funding, which may be able to serve G R T A as it transitions to a fully electric fleet. I support such investments, and I intend to work diligently to do my part to help G R T A rise to its potential. If I am confirmed, I look forward to engaging in collaborative efforts inside and outside of G R T A to advocate for and achieve improvements to public transit on Guam for G R T A's current and prospective riders and, and the community it serves. The following are some priorities I intend to pursue. I will work to ensure progress on the One Call, One Click Transportation Management System, the proposed park and ride facility in Dedido, the establishment of a permanent G R T A facility. I will work to develop guidelines on bus stop facilities based on overall and site-specific needs, particularly the special needs of people with disabilities and senior citizens. I believe those guidelines should be used as a basis to undertake a targeted needs assessment for bus stops, so we can target priority improvements. I will work with G R T A to bring bus stop, bring transit stops and vehicles into compliance with the accessibility requirements under the Americans with Disabilities Act, which addresses policy T twenty-three of the North and Central Guam Land Use Plan. I will work to ensure appropriate guidance is given to G R T A personnel, and they will be held to appropriate standards of conduct. I will work with G R T A to apply appropriate procedures to provide adequate preventative maintenance to transit vehicles and regular tests of transit systems to ensure that they are in working order, including stop request mechanisms. Toward that end, with G R T, I will work with G R T A to provide training opportunities to its mechanics to achieve automotive service excellence certification. I will work with G R T A to get their planning staff to gain access to geographic information system software, which should be available, and to ensure that such staff will be included in G I S training opportunities, whether that is funded internally or externally. I'll work to ensure the transit fleet continues its expansion to provide improved paratransit, fixed route, and demand service, or demand response service. I'll participate along with G R T A leadership and staff to support the transit component of D P W's update to the twenty thirty Guam Transportation Plan. I will participate with G R T A's leadership in the formulation of the Guam twenty fifty Sustainability Plan to ensure the inclusion of strategies to encourage transit-oriented development and transit-ready development consistent with the policies T twenty, L U five, and H six of the North and Central Guam Land Use Plan. I will work to improve G R T A's fixed route service, ensure that routes are designed appropriately to deliver timely, reliable, more frequent service system-wide where it is needed with appropriate study and extensive consultation with riders and other stakeholders. I'll work to ensure that bus shelters are safe and environmentally sustainable by providing solar-powered lighting systems, as the current plan is. I will ensure that G R T A remains on track for its utilization of federal grant funding to develop charging stations for its transit fleet and achieving its goal of one hundred percent electric vehicles by twenty thirty. I will work with G R T A to ensure that its operations address the Guam Green Growth G three Action Framework. And then for fiscal responsibility, I will ensure that G R T A has an adequate system for accountability for its collection of fee fares from transit riders, whether prepaid or paid on, on embarkation. I'll work with G R T A to explore partnership opportunities for agencies and non-governmental organizations to increase non-appropriate fund revenue. I'll work closely with G R T A to ensure that existing federal grants are fully utilized and that any unexpended balance will be reprogrammed to improve services rather than be returned. I will explore the acquisition of a fleet management system to economize on fuel and find inefficiencies within the existing fixed route schedule. I will ensure that any promotional budget will be targeted to high propensity transit riders, such as people with disabilities, so, senior citizens, students, and low to moderate income individuals. And I will work with G R T A's planning staff to explore the development of a bus rapid transit corridor under the Federal Transit Administration's Capital Investment Grants Program, which addresses policy T twenty-two in the North and Central Guam Land Use Plan. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify on my appointment to serve public transit. Thank you for your consideration, and I humbly and respectfully ask for your support by confirming my appointment to serve as a member of the Guam Regional Transit Authority's Board of Directors. See you do this, Mas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jensen, and I would like to first off, recognize our good Senator, Senators Sabina Perez. And at this point in time, I would like to call on Mr. Carla Branch to share his thoughts regarding the appointment.
Yes, hello, Mr. Chairman, are you able to hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, perfect, I apologize for earlier. Let me just give me one second to pull it up. Sorry, one. Good afternoon, Chairman Terlali, honorable members of this committee, and senators of the thirty-six Guam Legislature. Before I begin, I'd like to make clear for the record that my testimony before you today is strictly in my personal capacity. My comments do not represent my employer nor any other organization of which I am a part. Mr. Chairman, I understand that, given my present occupation, my testimony favor of the nominee is generally out of the ordinary. But I am here as a matter of conscience and as a matter of perspective. In the early twentieth century, a U. S. Supreme Court Justice wrote, "Anyone good at anything isn't like anyone else." That describes my friend Julian Jensen, the man whose nomination is presently before this committee. I met Julian in the fifth grade, and we have been friends since. His father was my elementary school music teacher, his mother, Mrs. Jay, as I have called her for decades now, taught my World History Honors class and coached us through years of academic challenge. In all of that time, Julian has been unlike anyone I have ever met. And in the time most kids were playing pugs or watching the Power Rangers, Julian concerned himself most fundamentally with questions of moral philosophy, the just or unjustness of society, and the power of any group of people to come together to make it better. This hasn't stopped for Julian. As recent as two weeks ago, Julian celebrated the arrival of a new book from Amazon dot com. It wasn't a new Game of Thrones novel or the latest tell-all about B. C. politics. It was a text on urban planning as it related to coastal zone management policy at a federal level. This was his idea of weekend reading, and if you don't believe me, I have the WhatsApp messages to prove it. Well before his nomination to G R T A, Julian had to show me his latest project, a Google Earth map overlaid with known G R T A routes. His goal for this fun project, as he termed it, was to determine if routes could be optimized for riders, providing shorter travel times and increasing optimal management efficiency. These are just two examples among a long list of many, compelling me to testify for Julian, and particularly on his behalf. He is a self-starter, he is a good man, appointed or not, in government or not. He is driven to make things better, and he has the technical skill set to achieve those goals. He just needs a chance. Lastly, I was born with cerebral palsy. While this fact is readily apparent to anyone who knows me and some who don't, I rarely speak of it in public because I believe each of us should be identified not by what we were born with, but by what we do with our time on earth. While much of my professional success has come from hard work and sheer force of will, I literally couldn't be here today without the help of others. I got to work today only because someone who cares gave me a ride. That's generally how I get from place to place. Despite my intelligence perceived or not, or all of my quick wit, I still need others to get me to the office, to drive me to a shop so I can go into a store. I still need others to see a doctor or watch a movie, I must still count on someone. From the moment he could drive, Julian has always been one of the people I could count on. Like so many of my friends, he never asked for a dime, he was never late when it mattered, and he never made me feel like any less of a person. Julian understands the power that comes worldwide you can rely on. I am certain that with Julian as a board member of G R T A, that agents and its riders will also know that feeling. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Branch, thank you very much. Before I go on to the senators, let me just read some of the the written testimony that was submitted to my office, and I just wanna call out your name right now, Jane Flores is one of them from the Bureau of Women's Affairs. And we got another one from John Ryan from Order, and another one from Kelly Marsh Typhoon, who's also a former senator. And also, lastly, Dr. Lee Ber- Ber- Oh Nahulawa. I do have the written testimony with me, so if anybody, excuse me, if anybody wants to read it, just come by and I'll show it to you. And now let me start with our good Senator, Senator Joanne Brown. Go ahead, man, share, share your thoughts.
Thank you much, Mr. Chairman, and certainly to those that testified on behalf of Mr. Jensen's appointment. But I did wanna ask, Mr. Jensen, you did mention that you work at the Bureau of Planning. Are you currently in a classified position in the government at this time or unclassified?
My position is classified.
I'm just asking, it's not traditional that we have classified employees sitting on boards and commissions. I mean, do you think there's any potential conflict with the work that you're doing at the Bureau of Statistics as a classified employee sitting over other government Guam employees in the Mass Transit Authority?
No, there are members on, on other such boards.
I know, but it's not traditional. It's not traditional, normally we have other, other members, not that it takes away from your participation, but normally we have other members of the community rather than having the government overseeing the government, you know, normally we would like others from outside of that, you know, in the public to be sitting on boards and commissions so that we have a different perspective, and it's always important to keep the government in check. I don't like too much inbreeding, it's not, I don't think it's healthy, so not necessarily to take away from your interests, and you've had quite an extensive list of things you wanted to see for mass trans, and I certainly wish you well with that. I think historically, it's, it's been dumbfounding to me as to why the mass transit on Guam has not been as efficient and effective as it can be, and it is in other jurisdictions. You know, considering our island is much smaller, we've not been able to get to that level of, I guess, community buy-in, where people that, you know, otherwise in other places would ride, ride the mass transit system, don't do it here because of the concern of reliability. And, and how do we get to that level so that, you know, we have other members of our community, not everybody drives, not everybody wants to. We have older people in our community that if they knew there was consistency with regards to the service, actually would, would actually want to participate. Not everyone necessarily needs to be low income to, to want to ride the bus, but I think it's just having, having reliability in the system because some people don't like the hassle of driving, especially on our roads these days, and some of the crazy drivers that we have out there, so. I mean, you have an ambitious list, what makes you think that's something you can accomplish and get others on your board to, to do?
Okay, is, is that the question, or is the question about?
That's the question, yes, that's the question.
Okay, because I heard like three questions in there, okay.
Not quite, I mean, I, I simply said you had a long list. You had a long list of things you wanted to do and the lack of consistent reliability, so I don't think there were a lot of questions. I'm simply restating some of the things you had relayed, and so I'm, as I mentioned, my last question there, I'm curious, how can you, how do you think you can convince other members of your board perhaps to do what, what hasn't been accomplished since probably mass transit was created?
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think that we are very much in a, a potent, or in a situation where there is a lot of opportunity, and people can begin to see that opportunity, especially with the infrastructure funding and the initial strides that the, the previous executive manager and the board have been able to make towards securing additional funding for expanding the fleet, both for paratransit and also the anticipated growth of the of the buses, the bus fleet. I kind of wanna circle back to your discussion about my role as both working at G C M P as a planner for the government of Guam and my role at G R T A. I personally do not think that there is any conflict whatsoever, I think that they're complementary. I, I think I've even mentioned some of areas of overlap in the way in which we have, we execute plans and we come up with plans for the government of Guam. G R T A should be playing a role in that, and, and I have, and in my own work at G C M P, recent, you know, relatively recently, I'm, I'm doing federal consistency, and I have noticed that there are authorities which we can exercise to emphasize to to like public, public highway projects, the need to consult G R T A to allow them to continue to operate and not have or so that they can cope with ways that they can continue to operate, you know, even as there's gonna be construction immediately where their stops are. You know, and that consultation, I don't think that's a consistent thing that they have done, so. I look at, at this as, as an opportunity for, to bring a different perspective, a, a very thoughtful and reasoned perspective, and I, I believe in the capacity of, of the current board members and and the management to be able to make huge strides in the near future.
Well, we certainly look forward to seeing it, like I said, it hasn't been done so far, and I, I think much to the dismay of many in our community of just wanting to see, you know, consistent service. What are the issues? Are you aware of how your fleet is maintained? Because that's always been an issue. How, how does the current fleet, maybe Mr. Ivanis can answer that? How is your, how is your fleet currently being maintained? I mean, it's nice to buy all these new buses, that's always been the thing. Guam loves new things, we love new buildings, we love new everything, but our ability to maintain it consistently has never been the best, so. Do you have a private contract with anyone that does the maintenance on your buses? Is it done in-house? How's that address?
Thank you, thank you, Senator, Senator Brown, to answer your question, we do have a fleet right now of twenty-two buses, and when they do go down for maintenance, we do have a contract with At Kids Troll to maintain our, our buses and vehicles. And we currently are anticipating the arrival of ten new fourteen-packs bus And we currently are anticipating the arrival of ten new fourteen-packs buses in the end of August, which was already awarded. As soon as those buses come, it will alleviate our, I believe, seven-to-eight-year-old R-Box and minivans. So we did have maybe seventeen vehicles at AK prior to this public hearing. But our transportation supervisor was able to pull five vehicles and get them fixed. Now we're down to only like twelve. And we just, I just received a WhatsApp message, we'll probably get three more. So our fleet is consistent. When it goes down, we work closely with AK. And then if our in-house maintenance can fix it, be it a headlight, a flat tire, they can fix it in-house with G R T A. But yes, we do have some vehicles and buses with AK right now.
I see. And are you guys doing regular maintenance on the vehicles? I mean, I'm not talking about we wait till, you know, the style of way to breaks down. I mean, you know, are we doing regular oil changes according to the mileage and the things that normally we would do with our own vehicles to keep them running and running well?
Yes, great, great question. So what we implemented was, once a month, the whole fleet on a Sunday will bring it to AK. And we're working closely with them to have every bus and minivan or vehicle that we have maintained. We do it once a month on a Sunday.
And another question, do you have a tracking system on your buses so that you know where they're at, where they're located? How well they're being driven or not driven? Do you have, doesn't say, your fleet's not that large that you couldn't accomplish that? Do you have that in place so you can track where your buses are at any given?
Yes, Senator. Prior to me becoming the acting executive manager, the previous executive manager, along with myself and the other staff and management, they implemented a transit management service called Route Match, which utilizes a tablet. So this, it's installed in all of our buses and minivans. We can track where the driver is, if they're speeding. We can see if they're going on the wrong route to the right house. And if they're basically not working, it alerts us here at the home base at our dispatch center. So yes, we are using Route Match, which is a transit management service that the previous E M and our staff and management utilizes.
And one other question, I am glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear you guys are using technology so that we can, especially for your riders, that there's a delay or whatever. At least there's a way. Is there a way of riders knowing if there's some delay for whatever reason? You know, if they have a set schedule, is that something they could get online and look at and check if there's a delay? Do you have updates on the status or, you know, are buses on time and things like that? So that they can track, especially if they're going to a doctor's appointment or going to work, maybe?
Yes. Route Match gives us the, like you said, we're using technology. Route Match does have, when Route Match alerts us that a driver is late, it inputs it in the system and we can track if we are late an hour or if somebody canceled. And it also alerts our dispatch center that driver for a bus, obviously Bus X, is still in Mangilao. Be prepared to tell the, especially para-transit, that their ride will be about thirty minutes late. So we do have that capability, Senator.
Well, that's good to hear. I mean, I hope we see better things because I mean, we have a lot of challenges in government. But to me, getting from point A to point B shouldn't be that complicated. I mean, we move thirty thousand students a day to and from school. It doesn't make a lot of sense. We can't move twenty buses around the island to pick up and drop people off safely. So hopefully, we'll continue to hear good things. And certainly, you, Mr. Jensen, you're very young. You've got a lot of energy and hopefully you can apply it. But you know, I'm just being frank. I am concerned. I want to make sure that we have a good mix of members on our boards and commissions because I don't like to see too much of government in government. I like less government. I think we probably will get a better productive view, but it's just something to be mindful of, certainly for me, if I'm going to vote on your confirmation because you do currently work as a classified employee in a government agency. There may be others. So I think your chairman is a mayor as well. So like I said, I'd just like to see a better mix of members of our community. It doesn't take away from you or your contribution or what you have. But I think it's important that we have diversified views in the community and accountability of the government outside the government itself. Because I just see too much inbreeding in Guam, and I don't see that as a good thing always. So don't take offense to it, but it's simply a question I'm sure many will have with regards to a government classified employee, you know, serving on a board and commission that's government and overseeing the operations of other government Guam employees. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the indulgence of being able to ask these questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Next line, we want to call on Senator Salutin. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought you were going to say I was your favorite. I was waiting for that, but I did.
I don't want to announce it anymore because everybody's kind of choosing you, just choosing one senator.
I miss that. Yeah, I miss that. It's okay. I know. I know. We're all your favorite, Mr. Chair. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this confirmation. You know, I too should have seen sentiments to Senator Brown with regards to classified positions. But most especially, you know, individuals sitting on a board has to have the ability to work with others and be non-controversial or, you know, basically doesn't have a, well, has a sense of working and having an open mind with others. And, you know, I've seen you in action, Mr. Jane Jensen. And it's, it's, it kind of worries me because this is such an important, important agency. You know, there's been so much controversy with G R T A, so much controversy on buses being on time. You know, I get calls all the time from mass transit individuals who can't seem to flag anyone down, you know, or even be heard at the agencies. However, Mr. Babalta did great strides to try and prove that. And you have big shoes to fill, Mr. Adonis, because I know Mr. Babalta not only put a lot of time in there, but he put his heart and soul in that, in that agency and the work that he's complete, has done himself. But, you know, that being said, I have a couple of questions for you, Julian. When G R T is in a better position to offer reliable service, how will you encourage residents to prioritize and choose public transit over personal vehicles in consideration of environmental issues and rising fuel costs?
Well, I think that one of, well, I mean, two days ago, there was a presentation before the G R T A Board. I'm not going to say I completely support what what was discussed in the marketing proposal by U O G, which was delivered by Amanda Blas. But, you know, there are certainly options that we could put on the table for promoting G R T A. I personally think one of the best ways of promoting G R T A is to have signage on the bus stops because it's very hard to know where you can actually embark or get off. If you're driving around, a lot of the times, they're simply not marked. So for the average person, they won't know that there's a bus stop there. And they'd have to go maybe online or something and go to the website and try to figure that out. And I think also, well, also the, I think the website has much to, much to improve upon as well. But, you know, there's plenty of ideas that can be explored. I think that some of the things that Amanda Blas was talking about certainly could find its way into an actionable proposal that will really elevate G R T A in the public conscience and give people a reason why that they would choose to be environmentally conscious to find an affordable way of getting to work, getting to where they need to be by using Guam Regional Transit Authority. Thank you.
But do you have any comments on the idea of using school bus shelters for public transit services outside of school hours? Is that anything you think about, too?
I have heard that that brings up issues. I would have to look into it closer. I think one problem with that is the branding, that you can't really, or that there'd be a lot of confusion about whether something is a bus stop for G R T A versus the public school because it's not going to be able to be exactly the same. That's not going to be appropriate everywhere.
That was brought up, I think, about a year ago, talking about the utilization of, you know, how schools are being used, you know, busing children, that, something that's used in Hawaii. A lot of schoolchildren use the mass transit in Hawaii to get to school. So it's an idea. So what specific ideas do you have that will help G R T A expand advertising opportunities involving, you know, what you talked about, you know, these shelters and branding, like its fleet buses and its shelters and the means to generate revenue?
Well, I mean, I mentioned one thing. There's, I think another thing that might make a lot of sense would be to invest in the production of some good quality P S As, which, you know, you can make and then you can rerun them with essentially donated time by by broadcasters. You know, that's, I mean, that one's relatively inexpensive, I think, because it's just a production of the spots. You know, then you can get into the viral marketing or the marketing on the internet, which I wouldn't rule out, but I would be, I would make sure that whatever we're going to do is targeted very well to what we would expect the core ridership to be. And that isn't necessarily absolutely everybody.
Well, I think my last question for you is regarding technology and the use of it for, you know, Guam regional mass transit. And, you know, ideas such as kind of get your, the ball rolling on there, using, allowing swipe cards, purchase of reload convenience for cell phones and computers. What's your perspective on technology integrated into mass transit? Other than what the good director was mentioning about the note, electric notepads?
Route Match, Senator.
Yeah, Route Match, Route Match, yeah. So what is your perspective on that, Mr. Jensen?
I mean, I would just start by saying that I would like to know more about that Route Match later on. So we'll have to be discussing that so I can learn all about it. Now, one thing that I have, like I mentioned, I'm not that much of a fan of the current website. And I think that there may be benefit to exploring the idea of developing like a mobile app that could be on the Android Store or something. And that would be able to show in a very user-friendly way where exactly, or where exactly the stops are and like what the route schedule is. You know, as to whether it could show real-time tracking, I'm not sure. Maybe that's not feasible at this moment, but it might be able to be integrated with the Route Match. You know, but I'm very open to suggestions and I'm very willing to collaborate with anybody who has ideas.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your responses to my questions. And, you know, as far as the website is concerned, when any agency comes before us on confirmations, the first thing I look at is the website to find out if it's up to date. And it looks like it's pretty much up to date because I have something here that says it was closed January seventeenth. I mean, compared to some of the other agencies, you know, you don't see anything. Last time anybody touched it was like in twenty twenty-two, I mean, twenty twenty and even twenty twenty-one. But I'm actually quite happy with the information provided. It's quite a bit of information on G R T. Maybe we can find another app like you mentioned to, you know, simplify it. For those people who just want to get one particular information and it touches of a, just a finger because of a lot of our writers, you know, it needs to be more techie, friendly, you know, for them to understand because there is a wide range of individuals riding G R T A. So I thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. I wish you the very best, Mr. Adonis. Like I said, big shoes to fill since Mr. Babalta has left. But I'm hoping that if there's anything I can do that you would call on me if there's something that you need.
Absolutely, Senator. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator. Let me go to another favorite of mine, Senator Sabina Perez. I hope you don't get offended, Senator Tyto. Go ahead, Senator Perez.
To Mr. Chairman for this opportunity and hello to Mr. Jensen. So, yes, I noticed that you are, you know, you oversee federal consistency at the Bureau of Statistics and Plans. And so, you know, I'm wondering, would that present a potential conflict of interest? If it, if there's anything that may go before V S P and you being on the board of Guam Regional Transit Authority?
Well, I would say not. For one thing, all I'm doing is calling people's attention to the laws that we have on the books that are enforceable policies under the Guam Coast Management Program. And my responsibility there is to, is to provide those comprehensively and consistently to anybody who is applying or is subject to federal consistency. Also, it goes, ultimately, the decision on goes up as well. So it doesn't stop with me. It goes up to the administrator. It goes up for review for the chief planner. And it goes finally up to the director of Bureau of Statistics and Plans, who is ultimately the signatory.
Yeah, because one of the things with federal consistency is it's not just projects, but also funding, federal funding, right? So federal funding could have an impact on the coastal resources of Guam. And in this case, the coastal resources is all of Guam. You know, the island of Guam is considered coast, part of the coast. So, yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, is, what ways can you determine if a project coming before the regional authority might, perhaps, there might be some sort of conflict? I mean, is there a way to determine that? You know, considering it's not just the project itself, but the funding that's coming through the authority?
I mean, we don't provide funding. We are part of a review process.
Correct, yes. And part of federal consistency is that and it's not just a project that comes before the V S P, but also funding associated. So federal funding could trigger a consistency review. And so, yeah, just, to me, it's unclear. You know, there might be potential conflict of interest. And I just want to make you aware of that. And if there's a way to kind of prevent that from happening, right? So, you know, obviously, we want the best, you know, you know, to properly implement federal consistency as well as advance the needs and the progress that we've seen such far with Guam Regional Transit Authority under the leadership of Sal Babalta. You know, so, you know, I'm just trying to think of a way where, you know, perhaps you can be made aware of that and be able to prevent that from happening. And if there's such a way, you know, perhaps we need some, I guess I would need some clarification on that in your role, playing both roles as a federal consistency reviewer and serving on the board.
and serving on the on the board of Guam Regional Transit Authority. So that's one of the concerns. Actually, I share that concern with my colleague. So I do appreciate the vision that you have as a board member. You know, I'm very much in support of reducing our need on use of fossil fuels and, you know, you know, maybe perhaps overhauling the fleet. And I understand Mr. Babauta was also very much, you know, he was a proponent of that. Unfortunately, I know in many public hearings that he came to, he talked about procurement struggles. And in looking at the latest minutes of the the board meetings, there there is one such, it's still stuck in procurement as far as the electric buses. And so perhaps, you know, as a board member, what could your contribution be towards providing that sort of support?
I'm sorry, I kind of I kind of lost track. Sorry, what was that question?
Yeah, so in in your in talking, in your testimony, you talked about supporting, you know, trans trans changing the fleet to electric fleet, solar charging stations. And, you know, I think that's something that Mr. Babauta had initiated too as well. So but the issue was procurement. It got stuck in procurement and I'm just wondering, what can you what kind of contributions can you make in procurement in basically clearing up procurement through to protests?
I'm not I'm not an expert on procurement. You know, I would, I mean, I would do the best that I can to make sure that I didn't introduce problems, but you know, you have to rely on the people who know what they're doing with regard to the procurement and all the processes there. So I kind of wanted to circle back a little bit on the never mind, on the issue with regard to federal consistency, just just for the clarity of everyone. I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with what federal consistency is, but it's in essence applying a review of what what laws governing coastal uses and coastal resources Guam has and then applying those for federal projects. And, you know, so I just wanted to make make sure that's clear, that it's not applying federal standards to to any or or anything like that. I think a lot of people probably get it completely backwards in their understanding. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to clarify that.
So maybe this question could be for acting executive manager, Mr. Ibanis. So procurement, you know, what what do you have as far as procurement support within the authority?
Thank you, Senator Sabina Perez. As far as procurement is concerned, I work closely with our attorney, Assistant Attorney General assigned to us by the Attorney General's Office as well as GSA and our planner with our buses, the ten buses that are coming in August. And then we're currently sending out another IFB upon review from our Assistant Attorney General that is assigned to us from Lady's Office for an additional six more buses. In total, with the money that we are receiving, we should have an additional twenty-seven vehicles. And for for right now, you mentioned the electric buses. Just to, you know, clarify, the electric buses is coming from the the BIL, the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed, I believe, back in November, December by President Biden. And that is a five-year plan to get electric buses and electrification station. So that's where we are at with the electric buses, Senator.
Thank you. Thank you for that response.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I do, sorry, yeah, I do recognize the riders, sorry, the on-time record has been improved dramatically. I think I even see it anecdotal, anecdotally. As I drive by bus stations, I, you know, I don't see as much riders waiting at the bus stop as I did before. So congratulations on that and, you know, definitely like to see continue to improve it. And yes, Julian, you were raising your hand.
Sorry, I just actually wanted to kind of go back because, you know, what you what you raised with the conflict of interest does make me not I mean, I don't think that it's insurmountable at all. I think it would be a a rare thing if it would even be a question. But I I certainly want to, you know, make sure that 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 is addressed. I'm not saying, oh, it can be addressed internally within within BSP and Guam Coastal Management Program. You know, I'm I'm going to consult with our our like ASO and, you know, if necessary, maybe maybe with a council or something to make sure that, you know, if there is, say, the potential for a conflict on the review of federal consistency on specifically projects that are being funded for GRTA by my being a board member, then I could possibly, if the if need be, step back and the different planning staff could might be able to do that. But I'm I'm just thinking out loud. You know, and I wouldn't know the outcome of of the advice that I would get until later. I'm just thinking that there's there's ways to avoid it, even if it work would be an issue. And I and I will do, I will do with my due diligence to make sure that that is going to happen. Okay?
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that's that's so important. I do appreciate that that effort. So, yeah, a lot of the questions were asked and, yeah, I think that I really appreciate the vision that you have as a board member, being proactive and progressive in regards to environmental protections and moving forward. But I think too, like my colleagues have mentioned, you know, we want to keep this progress going with Guam Regional Transit Authority. And, you know, some of these day-to-day operational things are are also very important in addition to to achieving the idealistic vision. So, yeah, definitely looking forward to to your contributions on the board. And so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator. There's only one thing that kind of just bothers me right now is the the ongoing project on the the Park and Ride. I just want to ask Richard, have you got together with the mayor of Deditu regarding the reservation of property that we need to get? Because, you know, we're pressed with time with that nine million dollars that is supposed to go to GRTA. But actually, if nothing is going on with the with the designation of the property, we're going to lose that nine million dollars. So what is what's the status of that project?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually reached out to your office and I spoke to Kirk Kirsten, Kirsten?
Yeah, yeah.
And she informed me that that you were in your offices was communicating with Mayor Savaris regarding the the parcel of land that originally was supposed to be given to us, which was across American Grocery, but the then and then
We have a problem with waterworks with that one.
That one. And then they mentioned to me that they went back to to Mayor Savaris and asked if we can get the
All free market.
Free market, yes. So I could call you and and and, you know, discuss it, Mr. Chair, because we're we're just waiting on the, we need we need the property even before we can move, Mr. Chair.
Richard, we we need to get together with the mayor because he offered that we can actually use the all-free market right on Route One. Because, you know, we need to to move forward and finalize this this project because if we don't, we're pressed with time, we're going to lose that nine million dollars. So I'm going to go ahead and make a schedule with you and with the mayor of Deditu. If we can get Joe Borat to really, you know, certify the whatever land area that we need to get so that we don't lose that nine million dollars. So I'll be I'll be calling you. I'll be calling you, Richard. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're just about time to close and I would like to thank all of you for your participation in today's confirmation hearing for Mr. Julian A. Jensen. And if you have written testimony, you can email it to to Senator Pito, SenatorPito@senatorjp2ly.com or hand delivery to my office at triple seven Route Four, MVP Center, shoot, shoot, one-on-one, Sinahanya, Guam, nine six nine one zero. And the time now is exactly for for five PM. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.